And the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. A reading from Psalm one. Blessed is the man who does not walk in the counsel of the wicked, or stand in the way of sinners, or sit in the seat of mockers; but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and on his law he meditates day and night. He is like a tree planted by streams of water which yields its fruit in season, and whose leaf does not wither. Whatever he does prospers. Let us pray. Amen to God. Thank you for establishing civil government for the good of the community. We pray your blessing upon the proceedings of this meeting and all who gather here. We pray your blessing and protection and guidance for our mayor and the council members, and all who have been placed in positions of authority and service in this community. We thank you for them, and pray that you would continue to bless this community that all might prosper here. We thank you for all these things, and ask them in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the two new republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 21st, 2022. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll ask our city minister Andrew Bremsef if there are any changes or updates.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, council members. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion accepting the agenda as presented.
I'll offer that.
Caroline, Brent, thank you very much. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? A motion carries. Under public hearings this evening, we have one public hearing for the final cost hearing for public improvement 5958, and we'll call on our city engineer Brian Yvall. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, and members of this council. Before we begin, I'll be requesting opening up a public hearing for public improvement 5958, which is Campus View Estates Development. Just to give you background, we will be opening up for the final cost hearing. I just want to know, a legal publication and individual assessment notices have been sent to the benefiting properties. I placed a copy on your table of all the individual special assessments. But like I mentioned, when we're opening up, this will be the final cost hearing for public improvement 5958. This is a new construction of sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, storm sewer pond, water main service, and all services with a new Batuma Street with curb and gutter on Campus View Drive. Location is Campus View Drive, generally located between Union Avenue to Park Street, and Park Street near the intersection with Hills and Park. Legal description is the Campus View Estates Plan, Block 1, lots 1 through 9, Block 2, lots 1 through 14, and Block 3, lots 1 through 14. As mentioned, today we'll be opening up with a hearing date. It's March 21st, 2022. I was proposing the interest rates be at four and a half percent with an assessment term of 20 years. To come in a packet, we did open bids for this project, but more to come. But with the bids, we just recently opened up in regards to the construction utilities for this project, all the miscellaneous costs, and future city admin engineering costs, and incurred costs thus far. We're estimating with the bid, the total project cost for this project is $1,656,000. I just want to go through the individual final assessment rates that are included on your desktop. Curb and gutter Batuma Street, 32 units, that's $16,850.09. Curb and gutter Batuma Street, 14 units, $8,317.05. Sanitary sewer main, $4,609.09 per unit. Sanitary sewer service, $3,307.97 per unit. Sanitary sewer services, 14 units, $3,842.39 per unit. Water main, 32 units, $4,818.84 per unit. Water service, 32 units again, $3,481.88 per unit. Water services at 14 units will be $4,016.42 per unit. And storm sewer, this will be done per square foot. We're estimate our total project cost of $1.17 per square foot. Now, with these assessment rates, I got it broken down. I'll just go over the total amounts per individual PI. Public improvements 5345, that's a curb and gutter Batuma Street, total is $655,648.58. Costs for public improvement 7211, the sanitary sewer toll is $306,851.38. Public improvement 8226, which is the water main, that total amount is $321,852.92. And finally, public improvements 7769, which is the storm sewer pond and other features, that total amount is $371,645.05. So once again, for a total assessment cost for combined project 5958 of $1,656,000. Financing, this project is set in the past for TIF bonds secured by special assessments, proposing $1,624,500. There are some currently deferred ones for easy finance at $31,500. You add these numbers out, we are funded fully at $1,656,000. So at this time, Your Honor, if there's any questions, I'll request you open up the public hearing for public improvement 5958.
Thank you, Brian. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the final cost that were just presented for project public improvement 5958, please step to the lectern and identify yourself. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. It's back to the council. We'll be looking for a resolution adopting those.
At the next council meeting, right? We're adopting on April 4th.
We're holding the public meeting, so I'm just...
Yep, just the public hearing.
Just the public hearing time, okay, so...
That's correct, right, Brian? Yep.
So, onto awarding of bids, I guess, is what we should do next then. And that's where we'll be looking for a resolution. But first, again, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is once again in regards to public improvement 5958. We did hold just final cost hearing. As noted in there, the final cost hearing did include accepting bids for this project. We've received a total of three bids in this council chambers. They were publicly opened and read aloud March 2nd, 2022. At 2:00 PM, the apparent low bidder was Central Specialties Incorporated with a total base bid amount of $1,076,20.75. The engineer's estimate of probable cost was $1,240,000. Interstate engineering, the consultant retained for this project and state staff, we've evaluated the bids and determined Central Specialties bid is all in good order. If acceptable, barring the other two contingent actions that noted on this thing, we could look to start construction this spring with a final completion scheduled for the spring of 2023. Mentioned the budgetary impact is included in the final cost hearing. So, once again, Your Honor, the project, I'm looking to have the council awarded Construction Services contract to Central Specialties in the amount of $1,076,20.75, contingent on future city council approval. That will be on April 4th, for number one, the adoption of the final assessment rules, and accepting the development agreement between the City of Fergus Falls and Prairie View Development LLC for public improvement 5958. So, I'll open up to any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Anyone have any questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under petitions and communications, we have a number of friends from the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center with us this evening, and we will welcome Mr. Neil Powers to make a presentation on an award. Good evening, Neil.
Good evening, Your Honor. Good evening, city council members. My name is Neil Powers, and I serve as the project director for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, Fergus Falls Wetland Management District. And I appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening. With me today are Joanne Ryan, Molly Stoddard, Jill Fritz, and Teresa Jaskiewicz, staff members from the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. And Molly will be sharing some photos during the presentation. The Wetland Management District has the good fortune of working with many tremendous dedicated partners. Our partners are often individuals or groups that go out of their way to work in collaboration on endeavors that benefit people, wildlife, and the outdoors. A few years ago, the district took steps to develop an award that recognizes the extraordinary partnership contributions of various individuals and groups by establishing an annual Partner of the Year Award. A few of the elements of this recognition include noteworthy accomplishments, partnership longevity, and steadfast support. Today, I'm proud to announce the City of Fergus Falls has been selected as our 2021 Partner of the Year Award recipient. But before I present the award, I'd like to share a few of the many examples of the city's partnership contributions over the years. Beginning in 1997, the city joined the district in some pretty complex land swaps and the creation of agreements that still live on today, and have paved the way for the establishment of the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. The city's engagement in this effort was critical to making the facility possible. You've been a steadfast partner in support of the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center as a local and regional pollinator-friendly destination, recreation destination, excuse me. Furthermore, Fergus Falls has become pollinator-friendly and supports the mayor's monarch pledge through the National Wildlife Federation. You've worked collaboratively to change city ordinances that permit native prairie plants within city limits, yards, and parks. You've added numerous native plantings at City Hall, Pebble Lake Golf Course, Adams Park, Grotto Lake, and the public library. And you became a pollinator-friendly city through Polliant, Minnesota, and encouraged public awareness through the inclusion of pollinator-themed public spaces. These are just a few of the contributions the City of Fergus Falls made towards incorporating conservation into the heart of our community. In closing with this part of the presentation, I want to share a quote from the employees who nominated the city for this award. "We are extremely fortunate to experience the kind of interest and support the City of Fergus Falls provides for conservation in this community where our district headquarters and learning center are housed. I suspect that not many field stations have that caliber of relationship. We think this award will provide well-deserved recognition to the city as a longtime conservation partner to the district and Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. And of course, I couldn't agree more." So without further ado, I'd like to congratulate the City of Fergus Falls as our 2021 Fergus Falls Wetland Management District Partner of the Year. So congratulations. I do have one other very brief presentation, and then, Your Honor, I'll go ahead and make that presentation to you. Mayor Shire, we'd also like to extend our appreciation for your support and leadership for pollinator conservation through the mayor's monarch pledge, the numerous native pollinator plantings on city property, and for working to create a culture of pollinator awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I think I can speak on behalf of the entire city to say that it's an honor to be in that partnership with you at the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. We're proud of that partnership. We're proud of what that brings to the community, and thanks for all the work. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, next on the agenda, Grant Cooper is here from Bolton Menk, and he will give us an update on the Downtown Riverfront project. Good evening, Grant.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. As I mentioned, my name's Grant Cooper. I'm a project engineer with Bolton and Menk. Kent Luajie is, I think, zoomed in. He'll chime in as needed. But yeah, here to provide an update on the Downtown Riverfront Improvements Project, the Phase 2 piece. I'll just start off kind of with the memo. The purpose of this memo is to provide an update on the following topics related to the Downtown Riverfront Improvements Project, the Phase 2. The project management team comprised of city staff has had nine formal meetings with Bolton Menk staff dating back to November 2021. These meetings were pivotal in communicating the preferred design and aesthetic components of the project in hand with the master plan that has been developed. Early on in this process, the project management team desired to further vet out bridge enhancement options while not wanting to delay the site improvements. This led us to a decision to split the improvements into two separate contracts, the Downtown Riverfront Phase 2 Site Improvements and the Bridge. And so I'm going to just take a little bit of time. I don't know if you have the PDF of the site improvements. Yeah, I'll just walk over here and just kind of point out a few things to give an update. So, we've reconfigured the parking lot area for one way in, one way out, for easier parking, and now I'll jump down here. We've creeped up the parking lot compared to existing. This is where the existing is right here. North is up as well. This blue area is a splash pad area. We'll have multiple jets and bubblers that are actuated via push button. We also have some provisions for the, the city has an NEA grant for artwork, so they would seek out local artists to provide artwork in some designated areas within this splash pad section. We have colored concrete throughout to have some continuity between the Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects. That's these, this red and kind of dark gray depict. We have a multi-use trail that's a continuation from the Phase 1 project as well. Here, this is another feature. We call it the multi-level river feature. And so this pool right here would be at the same level as the splash pad area. And then these little dams are about two-foot drops, and so slowly the elevation would come down to where this bottom half of this semicircle here is about a 11-foot retaining wall. And so there'd be a pretty large elevation difference there with that retaining wall. Here on the south side, we also have like a pergola structure to provide shade with some seating on this south side as well. There'd be this lower plaza area, stairs down. This would also be handicap accessible coming down this direction. There's also this white space here is a restroom structure that would have two unisex bathrooms as well as a storage area on the south side for city use as needed. So this kind of depicts what the site improvements would be. And then this gray area is the bridge contract that would be in a separate contract. Can you go to the next page, Lynn? So this kind of depicts, you can see here, this is the north kind of abutment and plaza area. There'd be a rain garden that we would also have as part of that contract. Obviously, the pedestrian bridge. Here's the south abutment that we would connect to the paver trail on the south side of the Otter Tail River. And then this also has it connecting to City Hall parking lot as well. We also have two bridge options that we have been vetted out. But Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you. I think you'll be able to give a good explanation of kind of how we've arrived at these two different options.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Grant. So, I was approached by a local manufacturer who believed that that we would be able to make enhancements to a prefab bridge using local manufacturers that would make the bridge unique to Fergus Falls at a cost that would be equal to or less than what a prefab bridge would cost. Of course, that interests us, dealing with local manufacturers. We'd have to go through the bid process as any other project would. So we put that local manufacturer in touch with Bolton Menk, the project designers, and they came back and they took a look at what some of those options would be. They came back last week for the first time with estimates, and that's what's before you tonight. Last week, when they came back with those estimates, it was evident to me that we're not going to go down the road of a $1.2 million bridge. I think that's the direction that they're looking for tonight. So unless the city council doesn't agree, I think, I don't believe we're going to go down the road of a $1.2 million bridge. So is that the direction you're looking for?
Yep, that gives me, gives me direction.
And that gives you the background, okay.
Okay. Um, I'm going to get a little bit into budget. There's a little bit of a typo with the site improvements. It says 3.36. It should read 3.67. In the table that we will look at later, it's correct at 3.67, but just wanted to note that. The, I'll cover the cost of the basic prefabricated bridge. The bridge itself and abutments is $495,000, and then site improvements, so the trail, landscaping, some of the plaza area, rain garden, et cetera, would be that 3.37 that you see on the memo for a total of 832. And with the comments just from the mayor, I'm not even going to touch the signature bridge. The table on the next page shows the Phase 2 site with the basic bridge for a total cost of 4.5 million. I want to note that this includes all soft costs, engineering, construction administration, testing, et cetera. So this is all costs included in this estimate. We understand that an original budget was provided to the city approximately two years ago that had the total project at 2.1 million. And we recognize these estimated costs we're presenting tonight are significantly higher. So I just want to take some time to give a little bit of some reasoning of what's changed. Some of the scoping changes is what I'll cover next. We added a restroom building, which is approximately $230,000. Retaining walls and foundations due to poor soil conditions is at $650,000. Sewer and water utilities for the bathroom was $130,000. We also have included in this estimate provisions for eliminating the sewer crossing for the river end just to the east of the Court or Mill Street Bridge. And so that's at $190,000. And then some other miscellaneous work like rain garden utility hookups that we're trying to have some continuity with the Phase 1 project at about $38,000. And so if you totaled up these scoping changes, it's about 1.24 million in total. And so another factor we also have to consider over these last two years is inflation. In looking internally, as well as corresponding with some other experts in the field, we've estimated construction costs have increased, especially with some of these landscape architecture and unique items, 20 to 30%. And so if we add that 20, 25%, we met in the middle, to the original 2.1 million, add the additional cost due to scoping, we arrive at about 4.57 million, which is pretty close to in line of what we've offered tonight for a budget. We'll continue to work closely with city staff to finalize project costs and identify funding sources. And ultimately, we would recommend going out for bid for the project so we know actual costs. These are strictly estimates. If we go out to bid, we can use that and really know what we're dealing with and what bids come in at to know actual project costs. With that, I'll just move on to schedule as well and what we kind of propose as a schedule. Next week, at committee of the whole, we'd seek approval for plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids. At the end of April 4/27, we would open bids and pending what bids would come back with and looking at budgets and whatnot. 5/2, we would come to council to award the contract. We'd start construction this summer. Project substantial completion would be this fall, and final completion would be summer of 2023. The bridge project would be, because we had a separate project, or because it's considered a separate project, and we'd now just be getting rolling with design for it, it'd be fall of, this fall is when we would finalize plans and specs. As well as this fall would be a bid opening and contract award if the council decides to move forward, and then begin construction summer '23, and final completion of fall of '23. That's what I have to go before you.
Thank you, Grant. Questions, comments from the, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Couple of questions. Earlier, Ben, when you said we're not looking at a $1.2 million bridge, it wasn't that there wouldn't be a bridge at all. It's just that there were two versions that had been put before us. One that was, what, $850,000, $830,000 versus $1.2 million? And so you were ruling out the more expensive version. And so just to be clear on that, for what it's worth, I thought that that signature bridge that was proposed, it's beautiful. It's a wonderful idea. I think it'd be fantastic. I don't know that we'd find support for it in town unless there's some way to come up with some funding for it in a special way. But it really is a terrific design, and I commend whoever came up with that idea. I think it was really fantastic. The other question, though, just in the scheduling, last year, as we were looking forward to this year with the constructions going on, I think we expected that this year, Phase 2, the construction would be happening. But from what you just said, the construction would be in 2023. Or did I misunderstand?
We would, no, we would start construction this year. Final completion would be in 2023. So a majority of the construction would be done this construction season for the site improvement splash pad area and whatnot. We'd hit substantial completion, so probably 95% of the work would be done with some punch list items, cleanup items, and the final, like, wear course for the parking lot, et cetera, would be in summer of 2023.
Okay, thanks.
Scott, just a comment. Thanks for those comments. I think that, just to be clear as well, the local manufacturer that we have been discussing still hopefully does bid the project. You know, they still have an opportunity to bid the project. There's still opportunity for enhancements to make that a very nice bridge. It just won't be at the design standards that the HELOC gold design would require. So it wouldn't be at the signature bridge cost. Thanks, Scott.
I think obviously, as we put all this together, obviously, this was going to be a $7 million project. And now it's going to creep up closer to kind of eight plus. If we're at four and a half for this, I think, you know, it would be good to kind of get an update on, you know, what we spent thus far, you know, what obviously the income side is, you know. And then, you know, so that when we're making the next round of votes, that we see where we sit. Because obviously, this is going to cost the taxpayer, you know, obviously, at the end of the day. I, you know, I understand, obviously, we were applied for another $1 million from the state. But, you know, I think that the challenge is when we see all these changes, you know, people are frustrated that we're spending money on this, but we're in that season where every pothole in Fergus, you know, reveals itself. And somehow or other, we have to kind of find a balance between spending money on items like this that enhance the town on one side, but then on the other side, you know, we've got potholes everywhere. And, you know, and that's the thing that everybody in Fergus drives on and over or around. And that's, I think, that's where the frustration comes from, is that we see, you know, $8 million going into this, and basically a relatively minor percentage going into infrastructure, you know. And, you know, I know we obviously talked about the franchise fee, but, you know, obviously with energy costs where they are, that's a significant dollar on. And we still have a lot of people in town that have fixed incomes. And I think so, you know, when we do these things, we just have to kind of understand that not everybody in Fergus is capable and able to pay for this.
Thanks, Anthony. One point that Anthony made me think, when we go to bids, we're going to have a lot of alternate, bid alternates, so the council has choices, right?
Yep.
A lot of the items that you've talked about, okay. Thanks, Grant.
That's a long one.
Oh, go ahead.
There's one thing that a couple of store owners have talked to me about on Phase 1. The striping is extremely narrow. And when you try to back out of one of those parking lots... parking lots, you know, the spaces that are out there, it's pretty tough. So I don't know, you know, everybody needs to go down there and park between two vehicles and have one behind you and then try to back out. Are they going to be wider when, when they're, you know, because obviously, it's the, it's the rough coat that's down there now. And obviously, it was rough striped because of going into winter. But are they, is it, is there gonna be more room?
I don't believe so, but that's something we can definitely visit with city staff and whatnot if we want to make those, those areas wider.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty tight in, in those areas for putting your car in and out. Especially as we're all still driving big cars that use a lot of gas.
Thanks, Anthony. So, Grant, thank you for that update. You have the information that, that you need?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do think there might be, now, at least one. John Stark wanted to address the council. Go ahead. Thanks for being here, John.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here. My name is John Stark. I reside at 519 West Bassett Avenue. And I would kind of like to reiterate what Anthony had said. With the cost of everything going up and, and supplies and everything, and, and this was, project was set up a year or two ago and, and got bids and, and pricings. But we've already seen in stage one that, excuse me, the price has already increased more than anticipated. And in Phase Two, as a builder and a construction worker, I, I see there's always unforeseen issues that are gonna probably raise the price even more. And, and we're looking at close to 8 million for this project. And I, I want to ask, what actually is the purpose of the Walkway Bridge across the river to enhance the project? Because if that's the case, shouldn't we look at something more serious like the sewage pipe across the river by Union Bridge that, a few years ago, last winter, we didn't have an issue because the water level was really low. But a couple of years ago, the water level was really high in the fall. And ice built up on that pipe to the point that there was literally tons of weight pushing on that. I actually had a, a person tell me about it, and they were concerned, he's an engineer, that it could crack or there could be an issue. So I took pictures of it and I was totally shocked. And so if we have another fall where we have high water and that starts freezing again on there, that could be a major issue for the whole south side of Fergus Falls. And if you make this all nice like you're talking, that kind of just throws a monkey wrench into your river plan. It kind of discourages, nobody can use the river as far as kayaking or any other purposes because of that pipe. And like Anthony had said, I've talked to so many people that are frustrated with our streets. And I, I realize we have a limited budget and you try to come up with other plans to come up with income for the streets. But as you've seen, the people weren't really happy with the franchise tax. And so they're trying to say, well, we see all this project going downtown. And it sounds wonderful. The pictures look great. But how many people are gonna use it? And we also have other projects in the wind. People want a swimming pool. We have the dairy project that is started, and now that's gonna be a project that's gonna cost money to put water, sewage, and, and streets and stuff into there. So I guess I gotta ask the council, do we really need this? And if we do, are the other things, the infrastructure of our city, gonna get taken care of first? Because according to the city charter, that's what's most important for the city, is to take care of the infrastructure of our city, the streets and the water and sewage. And as you all know, I've lived here over 50 years of my life. Our water sewage system is very old in a lot of places in town. That's one of the reasons some of the streets don't get redone is because they don't want to just put a surface over it and not deal with the problem underneath. And if you deal with the problem underneath, as we know, that can get very expensive. So I think we need to just stop and take a, a serious look at where we're spending the taxpayers' money. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, John. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for your thoughts. Anyone else want to speak to the council on this particular issue before we move on? All right, thank you. On the consent agenda, there's eight items this evening. If anyone wants to speak to those, any of those items individually, we will remove them. Seeing none, I would offer entertainment resolution.
I will make that entertainment.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we will need ordinance 21 eighth series amending the zoning from I-2 to B-3 as requested by the owner of the flower mill, Kevin Bartram, as part of that development. Would someone like to introduce that first reading?
I will, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks to Clara and Matty and everyone who's been working on this mill issue and through the zoning. Karen's not here tonight, but thank her as well. It's an exciting project and great to see it moving along. Item number two is the second reading of ordinance 24 eighth series, which amends the chapter 154.002 definitions of hotels. This has been to committee. It's been discussed at council. It's been introduced. If anyone has any questions, roll call.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Item number three is the second reading of ordinance 25 eighth series relating to city wards and precincts. Again, this has been discussed at committee and at the council. So if anyone has any questions, Lynn or Rolf could answer them. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resol, I'm sorry, that ordinance is approved. Item number four is a resolution expressing support for designation of U.S. Bike Route 20. And I believe Claire Beckar, community development manager, will be taking this issue. Good evening, Claire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. Yes, this was a request that came to us from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. They are looking for support for a bike route. This puts no obligation on the city to spend any money or do any work. It is simply saying that we recognize this bike route that MinDOT is putting together, U.S. Bike Route 20. It goes through town and is mostly over existing roads. So there's really not much that we need to do other than to say, MinDOT, we support what you're doing.
Thanks, Claire. Someone like to offer a resolution to that extent?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Caroline. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number five relates to public improvement 9148, the D. Lagoon Improvement Project and authorizing entering into a service, engineering service agreement with Bolton and Mink. I'll call in Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. I'm filling in for Guy Taylor this evening. And in the memo that he prepared, I'm just gonna read it verbatim because I think it's a nice little history lesson. I know I learned something. D. Lagoon Park came to be by the purchase of two parcels of land, 183 acres in total, one back in 1970, the other in 1971, for a dollar each from Mr. Benjamin D. Lagoon. So if you've ever wondered where the name came from, that's how it came to be. The main park area was built to include the main complex of four softball fields, restroom, concessions, facility, and the campground. In the 90s, two more softball fields were added, and the American Legion donated funds to build the baseball stadium. More recent years, a playground, 27-hole disc golf course, and archery range, and a BMX track were added. And then last year, the DNR completed a project that reconfigured the parking lot and improved the public access boat launch, as some of you have seen. Along with these amenities, the proximity of the park to the Central Lakes Trail has made this truly a regional park, which is why we're discussing this in relation to a sales tax request. Because of its age and the years of use, the facility out there, especially the campground and ball fields, is, is kind of tired. And the campground itself is out of compliance with not having adequate sanitation and storm shelter facilities per the state of Minnesota. Also, we're lacking electric capabilities for bigger campers and motorhomes that are looking for space to stay and, and recreate. What we're looking for this evening is to initiate PI 9148 and then authorize a contract with Bolton and Mink to update the 2014 master plan that was completed related to the campground, giving us cost estimates for all of the details of the project, including fencing, lighting, utility connections, and then the new restroom and concession building at the soccer complex, and also to provide the necessary drawings and renderings for the public to fully understand and vet the project when it's on the ballot come November. Bolton Mink is proposing to do this work on an hourly basis for an estimated amount not to exceed $7,000. If we were going to approach that amount, we would have to come back and get additional approval to do so. But it's not anticipated that that would be the case. As I mentioned, the state legislature approved authorization for us to seek a sales tax that will be on the ballot this November, and we have the ability to collect 5.2 million dollars towards this project.
If approved.
If approved, yes, correct. That, this project and the cost related to it would roll into that sales tax. If the vote fails locally, I know the question's gonna be asked, how are we gonna fund this study? And that would be out of the park and rec capital budget. So there is a funding source should we need to utilize that. So again, the action this evening is to initiate public improvement 9148 and then authorize the contract with Bolton and Mink and not exceed amount, not to exceed amount of $7,000.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'll offer that resolution, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Krista. Any questions for Andrew? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $812,753.67. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director.
I'll offer that we pay the bills, Ben.
Thank you. Krista? Someone like to second?
No.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee department reports. There are no reports from staff or administrative officers, and there's no old or unfinished business or business that I'm aware of. So with that, just a couple announcements. Next, on March 30th, next Wednesday, two meetings. There's the committee of the whole in the morning, 7:00 a.m. right here at City Hall Council Chambers. And then at 5:00 that evening, there's 150th Anniversary Commemorative City Council Meeting that you're all gonna play roles in. So that's kind of exciting if you haven't seen the script for that one yet. And that's, that's taking place, it is taking place in here. So that's at 5:00 in the evening, and that's open to the public as well. And maybe there's a role for all of you as well. So Lynn, do you have any other announcements? Okay, with that, we're adjourned.